Call the meeting to order. Our vote will be itself.
Evan, California.
Here.
Phoenicians.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Here.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparda.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Sparda.
Here.
Hi.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
If you would, we have a guest from the region's case.
Thank you, Chairman. Today's distinguished veteran is Philip Buenger. Lieutenant Colonel Buenger was born in Warsaw. He attended the State University of New York at Brockport and graduated in 1975 with a bachelor's degree in political science. After graduation, he commissioned as a second lieutenant with the United States Marine Corps through the Naval Navy Reserve Officer Training Corps Program on August 1st, 1975. After commissioning as an officer, Second Lieutenant Buenger attended the Basic School and graduated on March 10th, 1976 and continued with naval flight training in Pensacola, Florida. He was promoted to First Lieutenant on July 1st, 1977, as was designated a naval aviator on August 19th, 1977. Upon completion of receiving flight designation, his first operational assignment was to HMT-204, which was a composite training squadron tasked with training both the CH-46 and the CH-53 Chinook helicopter pilots as part of MAG-26 Marine Aircraft Group 26 at Marine Corps Air Station in New River, North Carolina. From April 1978 to June 1980, Philip was assigned to HMM-261 Marine Helicopter Transport Squadron, known as the Raging Bulls. During his tour, he deployed twice to the Mediterranean Sea as an intelligence officer and operations officer. From June 1980 to November 81, he was assigned as Operations Intelligence Officer with HMM-365 Marine Helicopter Squadron, known as the Blue Knights. Then in July of 1980, he was promoted to captain. Following his town tour of duty in the fleet, Captain Buenger was assigned to Marine Aviation Training Support Group in Pensacola as a flight instructor with the Helicopter Training Squadron. His roles included tactics instructor, standardization pilot, and flight leader. During this time, he earned a master's degree in management from Troy State University and completed the Amphibious Warfare School. In November of 1984, Captain Buenger was assigned to HMM-263, deploying twice more to the Mediterranean Sea where he participated in operations off of Libya and the Persian Gulf. He served as the squadron's weapons and tactics instructor, logistics officer, and operations officer. He was promoted to major in November of 1986. In January of 89, he was assigned to Marine Aviation Weapons and Tactics Squadron 1 in Yuma, Arizona, where he served as the helicopter division head and assault support department head. He deployed to Southwest Asia in support of Operation Desert Shield and Desert Storm during the Gulf War as a helicopter planner on the Third Marine Aircraft Wing staff. In 1992 May, he served as executive officer for HMM-266, MAG-26, and was promoted to lieutenant colonel in February 1994. On May 19, May 25th, 1995, Lieutenant Colonel Buenger was assigned as the commanding officer of HMM-261, MAG-26 in New River. He led the squadron on deployments to Fort Drum for mountain area training and to 29 Palms, California, a little different than Fort Drum, New York, for combined arms exercises and to a multinational exercise in the Caribbean and taking the lead in international exercises at Camp Lejeune, North Carolina in 1996. Upon retirement from the Marine Corps with honorable service, Lieutenant Colonel Buenger was awarded the Legion of Merit Meritoria Service Medal, Navy Commendation Medal, and Navy Achievement Medal. He has acquired over 5,298 flight hours. After his military service, he spent 16 years as a flight simulator instructor. He enjoys being in the outdoors, he loves to fish, spend time with his family, and spend time on his restored tractor and his family farm. He is married to his wife Shirley Anne. They reside today in North Carolina, but they have come home to hunt to celebrate a class reunion that was delayed a couple of years due to COVID and also spent some time with some family, friends, and classmates. He is present today with his wife, also his sister Pam Cox and brother-in-law Larry Cox, who was former chairman of Livingston County Planning Board. Philip, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. Do you continue now? The Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. Under the United States Constitution and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For your service in the United States Marine Corps, the Board of Supervisors is pleased to present you with a certificate of appreciation.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have some minutes for your consideration. Last regular meeting on 26th of July. Does anyone have any changes they wish to bring forward at this time? Hearing non-adjuncts motion in second. Mr. McNair.
Thank you, Lester.
Thank you. All those in favor. Aye. Opposed? No, they're carried. I'd like to ask Maureen Wheeler to please come forward and speak to a public hearing that we're going to hold this afternoon.
Thank you, Chairman. Today's public hearing is in regard to the county's contract with the New York State Office of Community Renewal for administration of $2.1 million in community development block grant funding through the 2020 Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, commonly referred to as the CARES Act. This is a follow-up hearing, as required by policy of the Office of Community Renewal, which states that following award, a recipient of CDBG funds must hold a minimum of one public hearing to report on program accomplishments. Halloween award, Livingston County entered into a contract with the Livingston County Development Corporation to administer the CDBG CARES funding. The Development Corporation used 100% of funds to create the Back to Business Program, which provided grant funding to small businesses with fewer than 25 employees that had been negatively impacted by the pandemic. Applicants were required to quantify the negative impact of the COVID-19 pandemic and document the income level of all individuals with 20% or more ownership in the company. Assistance was deployed to address improvements that supported customer and staff safety and improved business resiliency related to future occurrences of this virus or other disasters. Uses included new equipment, furniture, and fixtures to guide social distancing, technology to increase efficiency, allow for touch-free checkout, or implement post-COVID business practices such as online ordering and shipping, and working capital to bring staff back and reopen operations following business closures. The program allowed businesses to receive up to $20,000 per low-to-moderate-income owner and up to $20,000 for each qualifying created or retained job. I did leave a handout on all of your desks with some accomplishments. I'll go over those now. The program was in place for two years, from July of 2021 through July of 2022, or I'm sorry, 2023. During that two-year period, the businesses assisted totaled 51. This included 24 women and minority-owned businesses and 16 low-to-moderate-income-owned businesses. With 51 awards totaling $2.1 million, the average award per business was $41,167. The Back to Business Program retained 27 full-time equivalent jobs and created 87 new full-time equivalent jobs, for a total impact of 114 jobs in Livingston County. This is an average award of $18,421 per job. And additionally, the 51 businesses assisted consisted of 67 owners that were already employing 254 people at the time of application. So overall, the program impacted 408 workers in Livingston County. Happy to answer any questions on the program.
Thank you, Maureen. Thank you. And I'll ask a question also on this public hearing being open. Any members of the public wishing to comment or challenge? Any members of the Board of Supervisors wishing to comment? This hearing will be, remain open until near the close of the meeting. I ask again if any wishes to attend. Michelle, we did have free communication, please.
Local law 6, 2023, was filed by the Department of State on July 18th, 2023, receipt of order to show cause in the matter of Joel Mike Etl versus Livingston County Board of Elections Etl, and a thanking note from Michelle Weaver.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to ask Shannon to introduce our local law that we consider in the conference.
Yes. Local law C-2023 is going to be a youth year hunting pilot program in Livingston County through December 31st, 2025. This particular local law program contains license numbers 12 and 13 here today, pending year in and across all of the world.
Thank you, Shannon. Next, we have abstracted claims to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Are there any questions or concerns on this abstract of claims? Hearing non-adjuncts, please, Michelle.
Evan, California. Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland. Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Next, we have several resolutions on the preferred agenda.
We're claiming September 2023 is National Suicide Prevention Month, providing for a public hearing to consider public comment on the county's proposal to submit a community development block grant application to the New York State Office of Community Renewal, Town of Lubonya, providing for public hearing of proposed local law C-2023, amending and restating local law number 2, 2021, to extend the youth year hunting pilot program through 2025, and providing for public hearing to consider objections to the special assessment rule.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. Is there any discussion on any of these four resolutions? Hearing non-adjuncts, motion in second, preparing for a vote.
Lester.
Second, D., thank you, or motion in second, all those in favor. Aye. Opposed? And it's carried out. Roll on these, please, Michelle.
Evan, California. Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
We have some resolutions that are going to require a separate vote.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, Messer LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing non-adjuncts, please, Michelle.
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, Jamie Beardsley, Erica Brace, Breaking Boundaries, OT and PT Services, PLOC, Independent Health Association, Inc., Ashley Kirk, Carol Lynch Ricotta, James McGinnis and Associates, Inc., National WIC Association, Safe2 Rural Health Network, Triad New York LLC, Doing Business is My Company, and Warren's Commercial Team, E.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Does anyone have any questions on any of these contracts? Hearing no questions, the roll please, Michelle.
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Office for the AB, Harold Slonservice, E.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing non-adjuncts, please, Michelle.
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Mr. Demme, authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Central Services Department, State of New York Unified Court System.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any concerns on this fact? Hearing non-adjuncts, please, Michelle.
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Awarding bids and authorizing purchase of pretreated and untreated bulk sodium chloride crushed rock salt for the Livingston County Highway Department and other agencies within Livingston County, American Rock Salt Company, E.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Any concerns on this resolution? Hearing non-adjuncts, please, Michelle.
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following joint contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Town of Lima, Honeyett Falls, Lima Central School District, and Lima Christian School.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Are there any questions or concerns on this joint contract?
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Mr. McNair, amending the 2023 Livingston County Budget Center for Nursing and Rehabilitation, there are two in Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Are there any concerns on this resolution? Hearing non-adjuncts, please, Michelle.
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Authorizing a professional services contract for accounting services for Livingston County, Dresser and Malachi LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Are there any concerns on this fact? Hearing non-adjuncts, please, Michelle.
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Increasing taxes on sales and uses of tangible personal property and of certain services on occupancy of hotel rooms and on amusement charges pursuant to Article 29 of the Tax Law of the State of New York.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Are there any concerns on this resolution?
No concerns, but just a clarification, as always, every time we do this, this is a renewal of our sales tax. It has to read increasing, but we're not increasing our present sales tax rate. We're continuing the rate as it is right now. We need to seek renewals every couple of years with the state to continue to have that same 8%, which is 4% locally.
Thank you, Lady. Any other comments? Hearing non-adjuncts, please, Michelle.
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya. Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Authorizing the chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for legal services, Napoli Shalannick, PLOC.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing non-adjuncts, please, Michelle.
Evan, California.
Aye.
Phoenicians.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lubonya.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North D'Anto. Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparda.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparda.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Amending the 2023 Livingston County Sales Schedule, Department of Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. McNair. Any concerns or questions on this resolution?
Evan, Teladona, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Lubonya, Mount Morris, North D'Anto, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Amending a portion of Resolution Number 2022-422, adopting the 2023 miscellaneous pay rates, Office for the A.D.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Any questions or discussion on this resolution?
How many hours did they get in the guys that carried the memes? Did they get 40 hours or did they get less than that? Sue.
They were talking hours a week. On the average, so many people in the work. I think the shortest hour right now is something between 3 and 4 hours.
So they don't get much, do they? Okay, thank you.
Who knows that it's been more days for a long time? That's what we need to be concerned about.
Thank you, Sue. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will vote, Michelle.
Evan, Teladona, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Lubonya, Mount Morris, North D'Anto, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Authorizing the purchase of one 2023 John Deere 344L four-wheel drive loader for the Livingston County Central Services Department, five-star equipment.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Any questions or comments on this purchase? Hearing none, I will vote, Michelle.
Evan, Teladona, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Lubonya, Mount Morris, North D'Anto, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Authorizing the purchase of one Chevrolet Express van for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, alternative to incarceration program.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. Any questions or concerns on this purchase? Hearing none, I will vote, Michelle.
Evan, Teladona, Canisius, Geneseo, Groveland, Lester, Lima, Lubonya, Mount Morris, North D'Anto, Nande, Ashen, Portage, Sparda, Springwater, Westferta, York. Eyes 4607, absent 447, adopted.
Still have the hearing open. Ask again if any members of the audience are public wishing to speak. I ask if there's any members of the Board of Supervisors wishing to speak or respond. Hearing none, I will vote, Michelle.
To the Livingston County Youth Board, Emma Snyder. She's the youth designee in at time of the.
Thank you. Any updates to the board this afternoon?
Yeah, just a couple. The first is that we're working on the insurance renewals for both retiree health insurance and the regular county insurance. So those are almost set in place for January 1. Those both look pretty good, given the current climate that's out there and the market conditions, especially with the regular insurance. So experience rated and community rated plans are seeing increases in the 15%, 20% range. So our self-insurance will be nowhere near that. So we're in good shape there. There was some news of late in the region about migrants and asylum seekers in Rochester. So just a point of reference on that. There was a little under 80 individuals with family members, apparently with some children, that were housed or that will be housed in the Holiday Inn in the city of Rochester. There is word that there's potentially as much as 3,000 asylum seekers coming into Rochester for an email that we received. So just wanted to update you on that. That has obviously gotten a lot of people in the region, both social services individuals, public health, educational institutions like K-12, sort of on alert as opposed to what might happen regionally if that's going to happen in Rochester. I have sent a note to Homeland Security at the state asking them for an update on that. We have made outreach, or will make outreach again, to all of our hotel proprietors, in addition to SUNY Geneseo, just to see if there's any updates on sort of the county end or anything inside the county. We have begun work on the county budget for 2024 at a handful of budget meetings started this week. So we've gotten through three of them. So another 29-ish to go. So we're making progress. And then the next meeting, so the second August meeting for the Board of Supervisors, after we close, we'll have a very quick shared services meeting where we will invite the villagers, mayors, and start to talk about our plan for next year. There hasn't been a ton on anybody's radar at the moment, but open to ideas and suggestions on things that might be cooking. It can be a town, town, can be a town, village, can be town, county, can be county, county. So just, you know, think about some of those things that you might have as far as ideas. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other business to come before Mr. Davis?
I'd like to just say something that one of our neighbors that grew up in the town of Portage and still is in the town of Portage took sixth in the world horse returning in Wisconsin last week. And also, we have another fellow that born in the town of Portage. I went to school with him, he was a little bit younger. He took first in the United States, I believe they called it the Iron Man. He took third in Germany in the world. And I believe he lives in Geneseo now. Talked to his grandfather. And what that is, is he has to swim four miles, jump out, bicycle 26 miles, and then run 13 miles. Pretty good accomplishment when you're over 60 years old. And of course, we're all proud of Boo that said, "Fled of allegiance." He's done well in the world. Small town, town of Portage, we did well.
Thank you. Any other business to come before the board?
Mr. Lester.
Mr. Chairman, just want to comment on, I went to a meeting at the Sportsman's Club in Lakeville Monday night. I just want to acknowledge the fact and point out that Assemblywoman Burns and Senator Haume are just working so diligently and hard for us. And it's just so encouraging to see. And they're not just fighting for the gun rights and things like that, but they're also fighting for other things and that were discussed at that meeting on Wednesday night. So I just wanted to pass that word on to my fellow supervisors as well and in the board and in the county of folks as well. They are out there working very, very hard for us. And it's good to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other business to come?
Move to adjournments, Gresio.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's carry a meeting stand adjourned.